The parliament must go back and finalize the process of amending the constitution. Because the constitution supersede all other forms of prescriptions and acts. So we shouldn't waste taxpayers' money buying what belongs to the historical disadvantage which uplacks. So in our submission, remember, in two parliaments, we submitted on the land question that parliament must go and amend this constitution and of expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. So we are very much concerned that the expropriation bill is just a waste of time and money. You should take that money and give to our people to build the houses and businesses and that will be a benefit.
I think the issue of land expropriation is just a clear issue. We can't be paying people who stole the land. The real issues here with regatu land, if I understand correctly, we have about 60% of our youth not employed, nowhere to go. They are stuck in criminal activities. Why? Because we don't have land. So please, let us do the right thing. Let us focus on the youth and take the land to where it belongs. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. From Awaat 6, Elichelembwe, Chief Albert Luthuli, Municipalite. Chair, I'm also the Regional Executive Committee Member of the ANC in Khersiband. Chair, section 25 of the constitution must be amended and be clear about the expropriation of land and property without compensation. This will address historic wrongs of land dispossession and show fair access to land and empower the majority of South Africans. Chair, I'm also requesting, if I'm not out of order, even if those that are outside, if they can be given an opportunity to participate, because there are people that are standing on the entrance. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all the speakers. The issue of those that are outside, because at the time, the hall was up to the capacity according to the COVID-19 health protocols. We usually address it this way, by allowing them to come in after we are through, with all those that have raised their hands in the hall. But I have asked our security team to bring in people. As you can see, that block is empty and even in that block, there are very few people. If our security team can ensure that, they allow them to come in and direct them to sit there so that it is easy for us to point at them. Otherwise, no one will come to this venue and go away without speaking, even if they are outside. We'll all allow them. Thank you, comrade, regional leader. We are now coming to this block that is sitting here, or honourable councilor. Can you please raise your hand? Okay. Those that have raised their hands, you can please come forward. We're referring to this block. Please, let's respect the way that we're pointing at people. If then, it's not enough, we'll go then, start with there. You introduce yourself and inform us your name. Present your view.
Ika mangu zenzelengaga Zulu, mwea ebraten. Chairperson, I don't know where to start executing it. I'm disappointed or I'm worried because half of the people that have presented, they've mentioned that they don't understand why or this or that. But if I'm correct, Chairperson, mufumela ngiti, land will be taken and land will be shared. Somehow, something needs to be done to correct the imbalance that exists. Now, if Chairperson would allow, maybe we need somebody who can actually clarify the issue. What's the difference between the constitution and the bill? What must come first before the other? Because if someone, everyone is going to stand up here and say, "I don't understand, we don't understand." Clearly, I'm sitting here thinking, okay, what you said in your introduction was, we need to align all the expropriating bodies, that we know who is doing what, how. Then, it's probably ideal that we actually rephrase those words so that everyone will stand there knowing, actually, this is what we meant. The bill needs to be processed so that it informs what should be in the constitution or the other way around so that we all know what it exactly means. Thank you.
Before we tell the mama, let's tell it again that whoever is speaking and is on the floor, no one then can comment whether that person is saying something that you don't like or you like. You respect the speaker. So this person who just spoke, talking about people being opportunistic, is totally wrong. Thank you. Atama.
My name is Ms. Nkosi. I would like to point out that even though I do not fully understand what is the processes that are taking place here, but what I know is that government should do something about bringing back the land that was taken away from us. As a woman, I belong to an organization of other women. We know, especially those of us whose parents lived on farms, that after they died, the land on which they were staying was taken away and we, as their children, did not get that land. We got nothing. Although we also need the land in order to work it, to raise our children, to raise our grandchildren, to feed ourselves and to live a better life. My name is Nomzamo Gachuel. I'm an ANC member, the organization of the people. What I would like to say is that I'm making a call that the land should be given back to black people because it was taken from them. Black people work on farms and they work for a pittance. They don't get paid that much. As a result, they are struggling, they are suffering. So, and they also work on farms. Therefore, if people were to get back that land, if government were to intervene, that would improve the lot of black people because they would then be able to work on their land and provide for themselves.
Greetings to the leaders of this house. I'm Lindewer Avantir Ekoison, born in Frieda, 1963. I'm in Ward 3. I hear that you are talking about land to be given to people. The land belonged to us, the Koisans, because we were the first people in South Africa and the white people stole the land from us. So we ask that you must give the land to us. We want to make businesses, build schools, clinics and care centers. Thank you.
Allow me to pass my humble revolutionary greetings. I'm Awande Malatini from an EFF political party. I'm also a leader of a student command at MLK Empas, a chair. Chairperson, we do not understand why the parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution. And then, after amending the constitution, this committee must bring the legislation informed by the constitution. We made a submission in two parliament public hearings on the land question and we told the members of the parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the case study of the state. We are concerned that expropriation bill that you want us to make an input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally and is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all the land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial and land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find a way to pay for our land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and it should not be saved. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and we will not solve the challenge of our land. The money that is available to pay the land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need the land to farm, build houses and build businesses and expropriate bills in not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation above the constitution.
The land of the people should be given back to the people. It does not make sense that people or government is supposed to pay to get back the land, the land which was stolen from black people in the first place. Therefore, the land must be brought back to the people, to their rightful owners.
My name is David Gupega, I think. I would also like to make a contribution to this debate. I have been working on a farm since 2009 until the present moment. As I speak to you, about three weeks ago, we were served with retrenchment letters. Now, my livestock has been abandoned, there is no water, I don't know what to do. I would like to appeal to government to please come to our rescue and assist us and help us so that we too can benefit from this democracy.
Good day, Chairperson and the honourable women members. I today stand as Nolutando Sitole from the EFF SC, MLK Empas, Khersiband. Sia matina, as the EFF CT, we want our land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid.
My name is Nolutando Sitole. I'm a member of the EFF SC. I am standing here to say in the name of our movement that we, as the EFF, are making a call to be given back our land. The question that I would like to ask is why is compensation supposed to be paid in order to get back the land? It does not make sense to me. And with what money are we supposed to buy back this land? Where are we going to get the money? And who has worked for that money? Let us not come here and deceive each other or lie to one another. Everybody knows that no white person came to this land and crossed the sea with a piece of land. They did not have any land. They found the land here. And even if they did pay for that land, they paid very little for that land. So we too would like to pay very little, if at all, for that land. So I'd like to reiterate that government should take back the land because it belongs to the people.
My name is Mandle Gabinde. I'm a member of the EFF. I would also like to make a contribution to this debate and join those who are calling for the land to be given back to the people. I believe that giving land back to the people is going to save, or rather, the sooner land is given back to the people and the sooner or the lives of our people are going to be saved. Because as we know, a lot of black people are getting killed on farms by white farmers. So the sooner black people have their own land, that the killing is going to stop. Our people are calling on government to act speedily and give land back to the people.
Greetings to commissioners, fighters and the house at large. Standing in front of you is Tracy C. Mela from Governing Becki Municipality in Awaat 17. Chairperson, we don't understand why parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend the constitution and then after amending the constitution, the committee must bring as legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submissions in two parliament hearings on the land questions and we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of all land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that expropriation bill that you want us to make input on is legislation that must tell us. Now that the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone equally and this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. and this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, Chairperson, you must know that our position remains the same. We want all land to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be for sale. Expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and businesses and the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. No legislation is above the constitution, thank you.
I'd like to greet you all, my name is Mandela Masang, EFF member. An expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction because that could lead us not getting back our land and that it could take a process to get back our land. So we did not give the parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for the land, that was stolen from us. In order for the government to pay the money, just let the government give the black people the money to buy the equipment so that we can have our own things. There is no legislation that is above the constitution. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses. Expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of these things. Chairperson, you do not understand why the parliament is spending money on this process when there is a process to amend on the constitution, then after amending the constitution, of which is section twenty-five. So as a youth, so we don't need government to pay for that money to the white people. Let the government buy equipment for us so that we can do things for our own and have equipment to do their things, thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers. We are noting every presentation that you are making to us. This is the new block, those that have just come in. So if you want to speak and raise your view, please raise your hand. Yes, they must all come in. We just want ten.
I'm being elected, Chair, I'm being elected, sonke, inkanga no, ekona langa pakati, kama ubulhe masebogo. From ward two, Dr. Pixleya Isakaseme. Chair, ngimela pambili, naminzondulisi skalo, ngiti, nkela utu umxaba ubuyele, abantu inabamnyama. Iga kulugazlin da wincala uyo lapeto, Dr. Pixleya Isakaseme. Lapo ngikamekoe inkulu, zogula waga bandu, emaplasin, batitizelu ekolo, abana manzi, abana macholeti. Kotwa, akubueku ibo, abanini bo umxaba, aba ebela, wona, abamxope. So Chairperson, ngakthuma ni chimbalaku, ngakthela, stelumxaba wesu peki. Ibu go, abas koltisa ngazo, batatu umxaba ekona, sizo ibu isela akubu, stelumxaba wesu, emufu. Niabong.
My name is Bulhe Masebogo, I'm from ward two, Dr. Pixleya Isakaseme. I'm standing up here in front of you to also make a call that the land must go back to the people. It is very painful for me because where I live, which is on a farm, people are getting killed by white farmers. Their schools are getting destroyed, they have no water, yet these people are the real owners of the land. The mirrors that white people use to fool us in order to take away our land, we are prepared to give them back. So let them give us our land back.
Sanbonan, lononbingelela, onbingelela yoke namulha, ye mumlungizi. Ngopetrick ngonkambule, gitkanga lapayana, kuseme municipality, ngapansu wa waten. Sinengi nga inkulu lapayanas ngabathalwa semakaya, espekanana yo. Sitkala namulhu uti parlamenta, jongoba ngimela ngapamwalo, nyafisa no uti ngiyegulu, parlamenta ngogo. Ke nyokulumano baba, ospete, ubaba, ubaba uramaposa, kanyo, numpatisa wesu, ubaba titimabusa, kanyo, no mama, ospete lapakwalinda fesi, umama utokotitiza. Sinengi nga inkulu, lapema kaya vaga stro, lapayne seme, lapayne fulcrust, ngomkulmele wa bandu. Nyambilekbelungu akulu, satolu klukumezeka, esingatma sikulumano namplange, nanongo bantela langa pambili, ne ngasuga langa pambili, mangafika lama punu. Bakwe tu kutia ngofeprawadi disye, kofika lama punu, ayela lapayana gu fifty, eslo manngi pamu. Eslo manngi pamu, ezongbulala. Sitkela uti namplange, ekotya se vaga stro, nehamba, nio ivala. Ngoba lekotya se vaga stro, mi peto ngomlungu, obizo ngutu okrere. Omlungu akwazu bulala abantu, akwazu wa tonza ngi moto, akwazu wa shisa ngokesi. Omlungu, ogwazu uti ena, ahamba ngi moto, leze zamasocha, ultataapi lungela, uti ena, kogisabantu uniform, ya mapoyisa. Domlungu lo ana kantia, nipetelo umxaba, yenu kavamenta, lo krere nu yin, nuklenizwe. Domlungu, lononwazi, nu hamba landa belungu, ba se free state, uutu ba wazu, uzoba zinkapi, lamxabe, nwe, uti nabantu abamnyama. Namplange abantu bagitu bafile, batutuliwa, batutula hiwa laba lungu, ba akrere. Abantu bagiti namplange babulalewe linkomo, ezufuti, badilisushewu, uwiel omlungu. Abantu bagiti uzisabo, ziyadliwa, dizilushewu, uwiel omlungu, ngierye. Kanti senzeli, tilasu senzinyama, lapayinda wenyas se vaga stro. Amapoyisa agiti, si albona lepoisa, lebopela belungu, bakwata sitkulu mikliz. Lepoisa lebopela belungu, sitkali parlamenta, lipatarre lepoisa. Liktati lepoisa, esebenzwe lama nyama poisa, uzabonde, uutu lepoisa, lenzo esebenzwe mu she, wakwapa la, sititla, abantu belungu. Sikatela lama punu vaga stro. Sitkela umxaba wesu, eshopali, se mu ye 2001, antila namplange abelungu, askwazu ngwaba, askwazu ktolukese, askwazu ktolamaanzi. Ayikindasina, ayio parlamenta, ufumanka melua tweensi, saifotela, saibega skundeniensi, nama yese ilande. Kotae senten lutu, diose ekbeni, nisifasfe laba lungu. Aba abantu abamnyama, babulala belungu, abeko, maratina siyafas ya tutun, inganeza belungu, mazi eskoluene, zio patrisel, uktubulumudho nyama, ngaspam. Umtuano na twenty-six years, namplange, ubulala umudhe.
My name is Patrick Nkambule, I am from ward ten. I live in a rural area. I would like to bring the attention of this panel of parliament about the plight of black people who live in rural areas or on farms. I would like to send you as representatives of the people of parliament to go and tell the president, Mr. Cyril Ramaphosa, and the deputy president, Mr. Titi Mabusa, and the minister of agriculture, Ms. Togo Didiza, because I am also a representative of the people of Bagasfort, the people of Seme, the people of Foxpack and the people of Vakarstrom. I would like to tell you about the plight of the people who reside in these areas. I can assure you that even you are going to be very sad after I have told you this story. There is this white person, his name is Krailing, who goes around harassing and even killing black people on farms. He even goes to the extent of fetching other white people from the free state to come here in order to kill black people. People's livestock have been poisoned, have been killed, and one wonders whether this white person is actually the government because he behaves like he is in charge. I would like to tell you about an incident which happened in February where more than fifty white people came armed with guns and they wanted to kill me because I'm a representative of the people. I do not know what black people have done to make these white people so angry or to hate them so much that they are prepared to kill all of them. Even young men, we've been told that there are young men who go to get trained how to use a firearm so that they can come back and kill black people. I do not know what it is that we have done wrong to these white people. I am very happy that finally this individual was arrested by a black police officer. I want you to make a recommendation that this black police officer should train or teach other police how to do the right thing because he has done a great job by arresting this white criminal. Since 2001, when we put in a land claim for our land, we have had nothing, nothing has happened. We still do not have electricity, we do not have water, we don't have roads. Lastly, I just want to say that it's puzzling that no one black person has killed a white person. But white people kill black people all the time and it's business as usual.
Sanbonan, my name is Henry Chuncha, I'm from Fulcrust, Emakaya ngala. A representative, Ifamfus Committee, ngale Emakaya. Sinengi, njongo basale Emakaya tin, ites buzu akul, upsung, ngasbu yele muva akul. Ayiko imali ekmele ipume, iyonegwa amapunu. Umxaba sufuna free, umxaba kfunegba toli next, unzima, ngendele kilo ngay Emakaya. Magasa kuluma njenga manji, ubaba Nkambulela, upipi, unescatse seat, gunabantu bekatata isthogo, asfale upelepele. Abava len isthogo, so pelepele, ba Emakesi ne Fulcrust, bahasi zagali next, even today, is recorded, uutu bawa fula Emakesi, but there's no usisa balitoli. Umxaba angera ba utoli ngimali, lela ites ngai funu, nyanyaanya uya inkasu, la futu kubegia ngami, I have to own, I have to X. Upipi, pusoku mezeka kul, bizetitina, mele atoli mal, ulpete wonge lumxaba, wonge maplasa ngale, uakashi seal, uakashile, yonge indawo. Upsunga kul, agatoli next, I thank you.
My name is Henry. I am a representative of the people who stay in rural areas or on farms. I just want to reiterate that I do not believe that any money should be paid to any white person in order to get our land back. I would like to reiterate what Mr. Nkambule has said earlier about the ill treatment and the harassment that black people have been suffering under this white person he is talking about. At some stage, he went to an extent of rubbing pepper inside his head and nothing was done about it. You know, I get so angry and so annoyed just thinking about that. What is it going to take to put a stop to this thing? This white person who hates black people so much and yet he gets away with it.
Therefore, I want to reiterate that no money should go out to pay any white person in order to get our land back. The land should be returned to their rightful owners free of charge.
San Bonan, anginbingelele member of parliament, nginbulise nonke konala enlin. Ngimpostoli ngagasbegu, ngibuya eh Damisfontein Farm eh Ward Fifteen konala Ms. Ugaliku. Ni savea jenge Ward Committee lanchalakwan. Ngisela ngokzopasiso ukuti umteto otumshaba otatwe ngapandle wesnepezelo. Ngizokrela ukuti magubenjalo. Isisa atesenza kuteniza, ngiza inkulume kajaloo ukuti abelungu no ma aba pati bama plaz, eslala gubo, abas pati ne zigali. Uma ngabe kumele kuse into efana nama savis deliveries, kushushawa kakulu, kumeleniza nama big nama fo sholo, abantu bakina batuka na nama councila left and right. Ngisisa tusoguti ama farm owners awafumeli luto ukuti kungene emaplasin wabo. Ngisenge ngaloko ukuti ngizo pasisa logo ukutumshaba awtatwe ngapandle wesnepezelo. Nala ma trust lawa akine afagiwa awes, aasupawen zula ama farm owners up before. Asulega kakulu kawon, so omshaba ngkrela ubuyele ebantwin, ngabong.
My name is Mpostoli Svego. Eh I may, I live in Ward Fifteen and I am a member of the Ward Council. And I am here as eh a representative of eh those people who live in that ward. Eh I would like to greet all of you first. Eh and also I would like to say that I also stand here to support eh the call that the land should be taken back to their owner, the rightful owners without any compensation. Black people who live on farms are really having a hard time. They go through ill treatment by white people, they get killed, and they are really suffering. Eh because these white people do not allow eh services to be brought into those areas for those people who live eh on their property or on their farms. These people who live there do not get services such as water, eh roads, and other services that government is supposed to provide. And also there is that issue of trusts which were established eh before and which in my opinion are even worse. They have not been working well for the people at all. So I am also making the call that the land should be given back to the people free of charge. No compensation should be paid for it.
Yeh nginbingelele nonke ngapambili, ngibengelele wonge mutokonala pa ngiti all protocol of Zefu. Lo na okulmayo, Ujohn Zimande oseva esiwat councila eh Ward Eighteen Ms. Ugaliku. Ngimilala ngapambili jengfunu kusapota indabekutumshaba awchinchelu kubanigas bazo ngapandle wesnepezelo. Isisa atwenisisho ngaloko ukuti tina esma Ward Councila sitola muzima kakulu lapema plazinu. Uma ngabe sifunakuleta ama savis iskubantu. Abelungu aba funu kusaina ama weilif no ma bantu sbalatelu kesu, no ma ngabe sbalatela amanzi. Inkamba inkule esfige eslangabe zanana yoyo, utolukuti kuno muto oxonile, denumlungu ale ukuti leo muto angwate kuleo ndawole. Ungazukuti zombega gubo abeyaslala gleon ndawole. So ngiakrela kakulu ukuti lentule na ai chi jee i government kubengiyo i custodian yomshabo. Anegbe si kwasukuti simmaspalasifunuklethila abantu ama savises, beseku velu mtekelene ati omshaba ngowake. Angavel nganale skatisisakala senza leo savis layo, avele afta suguenzekile gongke ngoba ifuni male. So ngiti nami ngiaksapota gongke logo kshua ngapambili, ngabong.
My name is John Zimande, eh I am also eh a Ward Councilor. And I greet everybody in this house. Eh I would also like to support the call for the expropriation of land without compensation. Eh life is very difficult for Ward Councilors who are supposed to serve the people and who always eh met with difficulty when they have to go and service people. Because the farm owners, the farmers refuse that services for the people be brought into their properties. They refuse eh to sign whatever eh documentation that they need to sign in order for government or for the municipality to bring services to the people. Eh because they claim eh that this is their land. So they have a right to refuse eh such activity taking place on on their properties. So that makes it very, very difficult for Ward Councilors eh to do their jobs. I therefore stand here also to support the call that the land should be expropriated eh without any compensation.
Thank you very much. Uh greetings to everyone inside this house. Firstly and foremost, I just want to emphasize the point that land must be appropriated without any compensation. If we can have an audit to find out from when where these people who are claiming to be owners of the farms for how long were they busy cultivating the land. Imalia abobaza itata lapa, kusosonge skati baliima, bebenzi mali. Imalia abobaza itola lapa uma bafunu kompensaito. Eh sesi katele, ubabu Plosse lokulmay, the Ward Councilor of Ward Ten Ms. Ugaliku. Sesi katele yila amapunu asukumeza abantu bagiti ngalolshobo emaplasin. Banwi shoma nza bantu. Naniti niofarela bantu kes, ngia kichinyiso. Aba funi uguzo luto. Many incidents esenzekala emaplasin bantu bati tuchula. Ukuti obazilwane. Bantu banwi shoa logo, bantu bayakoshwa emaplasini umuntu asacheli for a very long time emaplasin. Ahamba ngatholanga luto, kufigi punu, dina tu yazi rufigi lela, emaplasin. Baniga zana jee emaplasin, nasatiniwe lo unigaza u bashtion. Umnikiplasu kubega wanklafe la bantu. Akubega bashtola kine, asaba koshile la bantu emaplasini bati private ama rice wabo la bantu. I government, eh seantuma eh parliament, ahamba niyoke zaleo ndole, na pi ndinbuyela. Ni zo kulumu ukuti ni safuna sibe nezingo, ngenda bayo ukuti kuguenzwenjani. Amaplasi awatatwe abanga tholuto bawa sebenzi lehenoch bayenzi limali barich, let them go. Land affairs, i land affairs ilanda bantu eteguini baliselue emaplas. Abantu abassebenzela emaplasini bazebafe lakona abanyi gunamathuna bakuke lakona. Eh kumkumutule teguinu de mine u i land affairs ite.
Eh my name is Mr. Plosse, I am also a Ward Councilor. Eh I would like to propose that eh those white people who want compensation for the land eh before it can be taken away from them, why don't they take the profits that they have been making from their farming eh activities all these years? That should be compensation enough for the land and black people must get their the land free of charge without having to pay any compensation. We are tired of eh ill treatment, harassment eh by white farmers. Eh it makes our jobs as Ward Councilors very difficult when we want to go into those areas and service our people. Eh they chase us away, eh they ill treat us. And as a result, we can't provide electricity, we can't provide water eh for those people who reside in these areas. Eh the shooting and killing of black people on farms is a very common occurrence. People are treated eh as if they were animals. People eh have been denied services eh, they have eh been evicted eh from these.